I'd like to call the July 22nd, 2019, meeting of the Board of Commissioners back into session. We've been meeting in closed session and took a brief recess to come out to start our regular meeting. Let's start with a safety minute. If we have to evacuate the building, we'll go out these back doors. There is a stairwell to the left, down the stairwell and out the back doors into the parking lot. You can also go to the right, near the front windows. There's a stairwell that goes down to the front lobby and you would go out there over to the green. If anyone has a need for a defibrillator, the defibrillator is to the right of the reception desk out front and there are self-instructions in that. We have several police officers here who I'm sure can handle that for us if so be so needed. And if you have any bags or anything, please put those under your chair or the chair in front of you so if we do have to evacuate, people can move through the aisles easily. With that, I'd like to call on Commissioner Urban for tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, I enjoy recanting prayers from our founding fathers and tonight is one from Thomas Jefferson. Almighty God, you have given us this good land for our heritage. We humbly ask you that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of your favor and glad to do your will. Bless our land with your honorable endeavor, sound learning and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord and confusion, from pride and arrogance and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitude brought here out of many nations and tongues. Endow with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in your name we entrust the authority of your government, that there may be justice and peace at home, that through obedience to your law we may show forth your praise among the nations on earth. In time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness. In a day of trouble, do not allow our trust in you to fail. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have several recognitions and I'd like to start with our Board of Adjustment Attorney, Bob Blythe, and I'll call Jay Camp up as well.
We don't have a chair for you, Bob. Come over here in the middle. On behalf of the town and the Town's Board of Adjustment and the Planning Department, I just want to say a very sincere thank you for all the years of service you've put in with the town. I believe we're going back to the mid-1980s. I know when I first came to the town, I was still a very young planner and had a lot to learn about, you know, what we did here at the town, especially with the Board of Adjustment. And for you all, you may not know what the Board of Adjustment is, but they hear requests for variances and appeals to the town's codes and essentially they're acting as a judge and jury. Bob has kept us on a very straight path with that board, kept us out of probably a lot of legal trouble we might have been in had he not been with us. So his guidance and expertise was absolutely crucial over these past several decades. And for me personally, I just want to say thank you. You've been a wonderful asset to the town and you will be missed. Mayor, I know you have a proclamation you want to read?
Yes, we have a proclamation for you, Bob, and let me read this for the audience. Proclamation in recognition of Board of Adjustment Attorney, Robert B. Blythe. Whereas the town of Matthews highly values those who choose to serve for the betterment of the town and its citizens, and whereas Robert Blythe has served the town of Matthews as the Board of Adjustment Attorney from July 11, 1985 until June 30, 2019, and whereas during his tenure, Robert Blythe discharged responsibilities of his office dutifully, thoughtfully and faithfully, and whereas Robert Blythe rendered valuable service during his service to the town of Matthews and the citizens thereof. And whereas it is fitting that the town of Matthews shows its appreciation when one has rendered such valuable service, now therefore be it hereby proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the town of Matthews that Robert Blythe is hereby acknowledged There was a tournament this weekend in Matthews and they didn't win the tournament, but they as having been a faithful public servant of the town of Matthews and that this proclamation expresses the deep appreciation on behalf of the citizens of the town of Matthews for did a great job. And I had the opportunity to go down to MARA and throw the first pitch. the valuable service which he has provided the town. Thankfully, I think somebody said they got it on video, but if you ever see it, don't In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Matthews believe it. The ball is in my office, it's got a big red streak on it because it didn't get to to be affixed this 22nd day of July, 2019. the plate. Bob, congratulations. So if you guys would come up here. Thank you very much. And what I'd like to do, Anthony, is have you explain what the tournament was about
I really don't really have much to say except that it has been an enjoyable, however many years it was, serving this board. But at some parts you do decide it is time to give it up.
and whatnot and then introduce coaches, and I think the boys could introduce themselves.
It is time. So thank you very much for putting up with me for all these years.
So.
Very good, thank you.
Start off.
My name is Anthony Andajar and I'm the President of Matthews Athletic Recreation
You did a great job for us.
Thank you.
Association and it's a pleasure for having you, have us here tonight. This team, the 10 U All-Stars, represented MARA well in the state tournament, the Cal Ripken Babe Ruth Tournament held in Asheville, and they won that tournament and had a chance to play in the Southeast Regional Tournament, which was hosted at MARA. We had eight teams from the Southeast, Florida, Virginia, North and South Carolina, and the boys played incredibly well. They're coached by Coach Ed Windsor. And Coach, I'll let you introduce your players.
Thank you. As you can see, we're a bigger team than five players. But obviously with summer, you know, half of them, since the tournament was over, they went to the beach, North Carolina beaches. But first I'll start here. This is Chase DeCours. He plays pitcher in outfield. This is Fletcher Owens. He's mainly our first baseman. Matthew Windsor, he plays shortstop in pitcher. Noah Thicke, he plays outfield in pitcher and third base. And Colson Kraus, he's a pitcher and third baseman. And let me introduce my other coaches. This is Garrett Kraus and Keith Decurtis. Thank you.
Well, congratulations for all your efforts and as I sat down at MARA on Thursday morning, get out there and do your best and I know that you did that and we're all very proud of your accomplishments for this year. So what I want to do is I want to give each one of you a Matthews pin and in the future when you go to tournaments, you can take this with you and wear it proudly and let everybody know that you're from the town of Matthews and that you're representing us very well. Thank you. Got it? And I, there's one right back there behind, two more. There you go. Okay, let's give all these young men a round of applause. Thank you. Appreciate it. Congratulations, good job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item we have is for one of our police officers and a week ago to, was it a week ago today? Yes. The police chief and the manager, myself and some other police officers got up at, I got up at 3:30 in the morning and we drove up to the conference where this event was being held. Needless to say, I slept for most of the rest of the afternoon after that, but it was an exciting time and a very special time for the town and for our department. So I'd like to turn this over to Chief Pennington to recognize one of his officers for an outstanding job.
Thank you, sir. If you don't mind, Officer Young, can you come forward, please? It is my pleasure to publicly acknowledge and congratulate again Officer Young for being the recipient of this year's 2019 stu-, I'm sorry, School Resource Officer of the Year. And that was presented by the State of North Carolina Association of School Resource Officers. With that, thank you. I'm not going to give up the microphone that quickly. I do want to say that in addition to being awarded the School Resource Officer of the Year, he was also acknowledged or congratulated on 20 years as a School Resource Officer with the town of Matthews, which is an accomplishment in and of itself, so we thank you for that. One of the things I do want to do, if you don't mind, indulge me just a little bit. I want to read the nomination as presented and read before all of the School Resource Officers that were in attendance at this presentation that the mayor talked about that we all went down to last Monday, but I think it just kind of highlights a lot of what Officer Young has done in his career and I think it's important to read. So if you would just bear with me. Officer Calvin Young was nominated for the C.C. McGee Officer of the Year Award. Officer Young has been an SRO for 21 years and has served at all school levels. Officer Young was born and raised in Matthews, North Carolina, and is a second-generation Matthews police officer, serving after his father. Officer Young currently serves as the SRO for Butler High School and I feel he is the definition of what a School Resource Officer should be. He is dedicated to his students and committed to their success. Throughout his career, Officer Young has been proactive in ensuring a safe learning environment for his staff and students. At the elementary school level, Officer Young has facilitated such programs as Safety Patrol, where students take responsibility for maintaining safe practices in their schools and hold each other accountable for unsafe actions. And Silence the Violence, a contest where students submitted illustrations on ways to prevent or end violence in their schools. While serving as SRO for the Crestdale Middle School, Officer Young established the first Junior Dream Team. The Dream Team Program, which stands for Daring to Role Model Excellence through Athletic Mentorship, began as a high school extracurricular club consisting of athletic scholars who pledged to be drug, alcohol, tobacco and violence-free. This program is now, is a recognized curriculum at high school levels. Dream Team members serve as mentors to their peers as well as the elementary and middle school students. While serving as the Junior Dream Team Coach, Officer Young prepared his students for service on the Dream Team at the high school level. Officer Young led the Dream Team members to conduct such programs as reading to the elementary school students, serving as DARE mentors to the elementary and middle school DARE program, father-daughter dances and student-faculty dodgeball tournaments, all to bring awareness to drugs and alcohol abuse and ending violence in our schools. Since being assigned to Butler High School, Officer Young continues his work with the Dream Team and serves on his school safety committee advising on issues affecting the safety of the school. Officer Young regularly assists with practice school lockdowns and help the student government to create a video for staff and students instructing them on how to respond to an active shooter situation. This video is shown to the entire staff during a faculty meeting and to the entire student population during grade-level assemblies at the beginning of each school year and is practiced several times throughout the year. This year, Officer Young faced what so many SROs have faced in our country, a school shooting. Leading up to the shooting, Officer Young was mentoring a young man who was having issues with other students. Officer Young talked to this young man daily, advising how to avoid conflict and reminding him that his door is always open if he needed a safe place or just needed to talk. The weekend before the shooting, the young man was involved in a fight in the neighborhood. On October 29, 2019, the young man came to school with a gun. The young man got into a fight with another student and pulled out the gun, firing one shot. Officer Young was in the school cafeteria, hearing the shot, immediately initiated a lockdown procedures on his school radio and notified additional officers to respond. Officer Young ran to the location where he heard the shots and located a young man lying on the floor bleeding. Not knowing where the gunman was and without regard for his own safety, Officer Young began assisting with the care for the student and collecting, I'm sorry, collecting all information and key evidence. When officers arrived, Officer Young assisted by providing a complete description of the gunman and instructed officers how to track the gunman by the use of the school cameras. Officers were able to locate and arrest the gunman. Because of Officer Young's diligent in training his staff and students, everyone was able to safely secure themselves during this crisis, preventing more injuries and leading to the quick location and apprehension of the suspect. Officer Young is commended on his proactive practices and his quick and calm reaction, which saved many lives that day. For this heroine, our heroism, Officer Young was awarded the C.C. McGee SRO of the Year for the state of North Carolina.
Calvin, congratulations. Calvin has, he lives in a household with four very beautiful young women. If they'd like to come up here, please. And also his fellow officers, if you'll come up as well. Your parents are here too. Oh, if they'd like to come up? Would you like to come up? Yeah. Yeah. Get family together. And this is a gentleman who is a former Matthews police officer as well. Next item on the agenda is items to be added to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, no member, no items to be added to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is public comment and no one signed up for public comment this evening. Next item is item 10, Consent Agenda, items A through E5. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item is unfinished business, the first being Consider Administrative Amendment for the Proximity Matthews Development. Mary Jo Gollis will update us on that project. And Mr. Urban?
Yes, in deference to, as I asked last time, is to be recused, my firm handled the vertical architecture of this particular project.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so now the board is, is sitting without Commissioner Urban participating. Mary Jo?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. As requested by the board at the, excuse me, July 15th meeting, TAF Development has met with the neighbors again and with the Tree and Appearance Board. Some of the changes that were made to the landscape plan was reducing the two six-inch caliber nettle oak trees in front of the fountain out on front of Monroe Road to four-inch caliber. With that, they added, they could do a cost saving and add an additional four more two-inch caliber nettle oak and three overcup oaks along Monroe Road. They replaced the knockout roses, as requested by the board, with azaleas and they have replaced 20 sawtooth oaks with 20 overcup oaks. There was some concerns by the Tree and Appearance Board about the silver line. At this time, we don't have a definite location of the silver line, so.
Apparently the tea is ready.
So we couldn't address that issue, but however, the buildings have been set far enough back off the road so that it will not affect the buildings. Additionally, Proximity Matthews has presented some tree information to the board, to the Tree and Appearance Board and to the neighbors, showing what the trees will look like and how they'll mature. Lastly, they are going to, they did agree at the last meeting about having a five-year bond put in place for the maintenance of the trees and so that, they have agreed to that.
Okay.
The applicant is here, representative, if you have any other questions or concerns for me or the applicant.
Okay, I'm going back.
Just to address the notice.
Yes.
Okay, so first of all, we apologize. Our maintenance supervisor came up today, that is the air handler for the library, so it's their fault. So we, I sent out an email today to the person in charge of the library and asked them to address it and I asked that it be addressed before the August 5th meeting, but this is by far the worst it's been. But I wanted to apologize to everybody in advance. We are working on it.
Okay, so on the warranty.
Yes.
The notes have not been changed on the plan, so does that need to be included in the motion?
Yes, and yes. It does need to be included in the motion. We have not received revised hard copies yet. We wanted to make sure after this meeting, if there was any other changes, then they would send us the hard copies for the clerk to sign off on if the board approved it and that would have the five-year guarantee listed on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any questions or a motion? Mr. Query?
I'd like to make a motion. Do you say we need to add the five-year to the motions?
Yes, please.
Excuse me, thank you. I reckon first thing then, we're going to add the five-year warranty to the motion. And with that, the requested zoning is as currently amended, is approved and has been found to be consistent with Matthews Land Use Plan or documents to be reasonably consistent with Matthews Land Use Plan and despite the landscape changes, assists with the general curb appeal of the property. And it's reasonable, the request only makes a modification to the landscape by retaining the overall site layout and architectural theme. Thus, the request is reasonable. The general look and feel of the interior site will remain unchanged from the original proposal.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban, we're now back as part of the board to discuss the next matter on the agenda. The next item is update on planning conference to-do list.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor members of the board, that information is in your packet. I'll go over these quickly. We have a couple, five and six are related to do some civic youth outreach with the high school, Butler High School, and then some type of intern program with the high school to students to potentially sit on our town advisory boards. Maureen Keith did make efforts to reach out to CMS, everybody's very busy, or Butler, everybody's busy, but we are going to continue that outreach in August when the new school year begins. Number 20 there is what happened just in closed session, really to review our emergency operations plan and so you guys understand the roles each of you play and the roles that we play and I'm sure you agree that the chiefs did a great job in going over that plan with us. Number 32 deals with murals. You guys are going to have on the agenda tonight, two things actually, a mural, new mural to consider and hopefully approve, and also a public art or mural policy as a way to, you know, kind of formalize the process to, as we go forward on these murals. They're very popular and a lot of people would like to have some input into that. Number 36 is a recent, relatively recent update. We did secure $250,000. Thanks goes to Senator Dan Bishop and on the House side, probably a joint effort between Bill Brawley and our current Representative Rachel Hunt. The mayor, Reverend Whitley, CJ O'Neil, the Public Works Director, and myself met this past Friday to, or the Friday past, to talk about the project going forward with this $250,000. We want to make the roads safer. That really is three components of that, to create a stop sign intersection there at the Matthews School Road, because we, the School Road and Crestdale Road, to make sure traffic goes slowly. There are some places where the road has been, we have pothole, well, not potholes, but holes beside the road. We want to, we want to do a little bit of widening in there to make sure the trucks are, have the ability to stay on pavement. And then the third thing that we want to do is focus on a 10-foot wide, multi-use path that's going to be designed and built. On the west side of the street, which is the Mount Maria side of the street, this is a segment of the Crestdale Heritage Trail. We just wanted to remind everybody, we have a $250,000 budget. That's from two grants from the state. And then the last thing is clarifying roles or expectations of advisory boards. You guys continue to work on that and I think that's a, you know, that's in process. That's the way I said it. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Higgin?
Yes, is Reverend Whitley in agreement with your suggested improvements to Crestdale Road?
Yes, sir. Yeah. I was a head nod.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Hazen, just in addition on number five and six, a youth outreach and a potential internship program, I've been asked and I've reached out to our Matthews Committee on Education, being that they represent a variety of schools, and they are going to also assist in the recruiting of high school or junior college-type age group for both internship and advisory board. So I think we may have a better outreach through that and I'll remind them.
Thanks very much.
It came up on the last agenda though, you should know.
Any other questions for the manager? Okay. Thank you, Hazen. The next item under new business, item 12A, is received information on public art installation procedures and I'll call on Corey King to provide an overview of that for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Feedback staff received a couple of meetings ago regarding to public art showed that there was a desire to have a couple of things. One was a clearly defined process for the installation of public art, deliberate solicitation of feedback from stakeholders, i.e. citizens, local artists, et cetera, sharing of ideas and concepts with the board earlier in the process and also options to choose from when possible to select public art pieces. We do believe what we've proposed here meets those desires. Staff proposes an update to the cultural action plan, the existing cultural action plan possibly as a.
The next item under new business, item twelve A, is receive information on public art installation procedures, and I'll call on Corey King to provide an overview of that for us.
Thank you, Mayor and board. Feedback staff received a couple of meetings ago regarding to public art showed that there was a desire to have a couple of things. One was a clearly defined process for the installation of public art, deliberate, deliberate solicitation of feedback from stakeholders, i.e. citizens, local artists, et cetera, sharing of ideas and concepts with the board earlier in the process, and also options to choose from when possible to select public art pieces. We do believe what, what we've proposed here meets those desires. Staff proposes an update to the cultural action plan, the existing cultural action plan possibly as a, as an addendum outlining these steps to installation of public art. Step one, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee would remain the group to be the ones that receive the information or the ideas. Now, these ideas could originate from anywhere, could be a citizen within the committee, from staff, but the thought would be that this group would remain that, that body that evaluates the idea for appropriateness. Now, in terms of appropriateness, we're defining it as, one, it supports the mission and vision of the Town of Matthews, but then also ensures that it doesn't fall into a sign category, which would then move into a planning decision. If deemed appropriate, the next available meeting, it will be added to the agenda, and in this step is where, well, let me back up, once an idea was deemed appropriate, at this point, this information will be shared with the manager, clerk, and the communications coordinator to, again, share the information with you a little bit earlier in the process. And now, again, if it is deemed appropriate, as part of step two, it will be then added to the next agenda, or the next meeting agenda for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Promotion of this meeting would, well, this meeting would serve as the, the public input meeting for the idea. It would be targeted promotion to the stakeholders, defined by the location of the potential art, and also anyone that has showed an interest in sharing their, their thoughts on public art around Matthews. This would be this chance for the public to share their thoughts at the concept level, again, engaging the public earlier on in the process. The goal here is to have a clear vision for what the deliverable could be, and if it does take multiple meetings, you know, that's, that's certainly an option. And again, this would be shared with the town board. Now, once a, an idea is formed and there is a, say, clear deliverable, town staff would commission an artist to apply, there'd be a call, a call to artists to submit these applications. These artists would then show examples of previous work that they've done similar to what the idea is, and staff and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee would evaluate these applications and select an artist. Now, the way that we've received art in the past has come from one of two ways. Either there is an idea, so sort of following this format, but then also, if you think about the public display of affection, that was a piece that sort of, was sort of shared with us. It was something that was, say, built. In the case of, say, again, the public display of affection, the piece would then start in the process here at step four, where it would be a submission of one to three illustrations of a proposed art idea. Again, once this art is received, it would then be added to the next meeting, or next month's meeting agenda, for, again, another opportunity for the public to view the illustrations and give some feedback on what, say, options could be. Again, if it is multiple meetings to gain consensus within the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, that's certainly an option. Another part to this step is the inclusion of a, a vision statement that closely aligns itself with the art. And this is one that was added fairly recently as we were developing this process. We had a meeting on July tenth about the piece of art that we're gonna discuss a little bit later, and one of the comments, it, I mean, it really made sense, it's something that we sort of, is in the back of our mind, but something that's not really on paper, is what is the common thread for all the art pieces around Matthews? And staff views that the, the vision statements could potentially be that, that common thread. It is tough, so, and, and, well, I'll say it did lead to an interesting conversation, say, one desire to have certain boxes that, say, all the art should fit in, but on the other hand, you know, should every piece have the word Matthews in it, you know? And also thinking about an artist, are we attempting to limit creativity? It is tough to look at art and try and put it in a box at times. I do think the vision statements are flexible enough to where an artist could be creative and still have this common thread that could be prevalent throughout all art pieces installed in Matthews. And then ultimately, again, once there is consensus from, well, within the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the fifth step would be then that presentation to the town board with the illustration, illustrations for the more discussion, if additional renderings are desired by the town board, you know, that would be asked of the artists. And again, I'll mention that at the ending of each step, information will be shared with the manager and clerk to, I guess, keep the board updated as the ideas progress. And then once approved, the artists would be given a notice to proceed and we would install the art.
Any questions for Corey? Mr. Milton?
Thank you, Mayor. Corey, the one item that brings this policy or practice into play is if the artist or building owner requests funding from the town. Is that correct?
Say that one more time.
The, the only thing that would bring this document into play is if the artist or the building owner or whoever wants to receive funding from the town. If, if I have a building in downtown Matthews and I want to put a mural on the side of that building, is there anything that prevents me from going to artist John Smith and saying, "Hey, will you design and put a eleven-by-seventeen mural on the side of my building?"
Gotcha. Interesting, I think, looking at the UDO, you know, murals are sort of outlined within the UDO. I think in that case, if it were just simply, if I, if I heard you right, a property owner saying, "I want to put my own mural up," then I don't need to follow this process. I may have to lean to the planning board, or maybe Hazen on that one.
So, it does, I think, I think if it's a sign, then I think, if, or if we determine it's a sign, then it's gonna fall under the sign ordinance, it's gonna have to be regulated through the sign ordinance. But I understand also, Charlie, please help us out on this, if it is somebody's property that the town doesn't necessarily have a role in, now, it sure would be nice if we all could work together and play nice in the sandbox, but it doesn't seem to me that the town can dictate what goes up on that owner's wall.
That's basically correct. The mayor was just asking me a little bit ago about some, a recent case on this. There is some opportunity for regulation, but if you remember in the Gilbert sign, the Reed versus Town and Gilbert sign case, a lot of that came down on having to look at content to make a determination on whether that sign was legal or not, and content review is not permissible. So, you gotta be careful there if you're saying, "We're gonna review it," and as to content. Now, doing that, I'm trying to get around and say that if someone puts something up on their wall, there is some opportunity for limited commercial regulatory aspects to that, such as if the mural depicted every item or the types of items that was in that particular downtown store, for instance, it was an antique store and everything on the mural was antiques, that could be determined to be a business sign and therefore would come under the sign regulations. But again, you've got to look at it and make a determination, and so we're always gonna be subject to someone trying to say that we are violating freedom of expression because we're having to do content review to approve or not approve it. But to answer your question, Mr. Manager, I think basically you're correct, that someone putting something up on their building, unless it was patently offensive, such as pornographic, we would have no regulatory authority over it.
If I may ask a follow-up, as, as a point of clarification. If the dance studio, or let's use a real-world example, the, the owner of the property at North End, if he wanted to put a, another mural similar to the bicycles, if he wanted to put another mural like that up tomorrow, there's nothing in this document or there's nothing we have in place that prevents him or, or requires him to follow this. This, if I read this document right, the only thing we're allowed to get involved in is if the artist or the building owner wants to receive funding from the town for the installation of the mural.
This document is designed for those projects where the town is involved.
Right. So no one really has to come before us if they want to put up a mural?
That's correct, unless the mural itself can be determined to be a sign and then it falls under the sign regulations.
Thank you for telling me.
Mr. Urban?
I guess, per the former mayor, let's take a half step back. I guess my thought process in gleaning some things from Commissioner Miller's presentations on theming, I really thought that this was sort of an attempt at creating a multifaceted program. One was that there would be a town-guided art theme. Let's take, for example, hypothetically pottery. And so the town would create a theme around pottery or trains. And so that would be the town's mission in which there would be a call to artists and a program, and I'm sure you've been in a lot of towns where they have bears and painted pigs and guitars and all sorts of things, and it's town-generated and they do all sorts of activities related to that. Then you would have, then by that would be the catalyst to say, "We're embracing art," and so we'd have private interjection of art, which we would not control. Then we would have one-offs, which this would potentially control, where an artist would come and say, "I want to do something special in collaboration with the town. I don't want to do the pottery piece, but I want to do something celebrating the history of trains," or something of that nature. We would also have a program that would encourage the rezonings, and we don't have it in our ordinance right now, is a percent through the redevelopment process for the rezoning. So you're gonna build a building, it's one million dollars, a percent goes to art, and maybe there's some catch framework around that as well. And, and murals are all part of that process too, from that aspect of it. So I guess, I really thought that, this, this sounds like a one-off, where someone comes and says, "Well, we want to do something," or the town wants to do something in one particular spot. Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we were talking about something in a more grounded, thematic situation for the town aspect of it that opened up the doors for other activities and, and private individuals to get involved as well. So maybe I missed the target.
So I, I think that's a valid point. I, I think at the planning conference, in my mind, it wasn't as clear as that, run with that thought that you just made, but we are happy to... We are happy to pursue that, thank you. I, I guess I would say, I would ask the board to give us that direction. This, this is a step in the right direction. It's a process, it gets public input, the staff's not driving it or getting, or perception of staff-driven, but thematically, I mean, that, I don't, you know, we'd have to think about how we want to go about to develop the themes. That's really the question, how do you develop the themes? Do you go back to the public and figure out some kind of public input committee? Do you delegate that to Parks and Recreation and Cultural Advisory Committee? I guess we'd ask for direction from the board of how do you guys want to push forward?
And to piggyback on that, to have a theme doesn't mean you don't, to have a theme doesn't necessarily mean there is a non-theme, meaning you designate ten spots in town for art and it's open to artists in general. I mean, that's the opposite hand. The other way is you define a theme, a train theme or a pottery theme, or you don't have a theme whatsoever, and there are communities that do that, and each artist is called to deal with a certain site condition from that aspect, but it's under these guidelines from that aspect of it. So I, that's, that's what our take was, because I thought the town would sort of head up being the catalyst for the call to artists using our theme, and then that would invigorate the rest of the art community to say, "I want to get in this as well," and start sort of ramping that up, because frankly, we're, we're a pottery town, that's our history, and we have a wealth of artists locally that paint and do other types of art locally as well, which I don't think we've ever sort of really reached out to them other than sort of on occasion.
Mr. Higgins?
I have a few comments to, to follow up on what we just discussed. I, I don't disagree that a theme would be nice, but you can definitely overdo it. I've been to some, some towns up north that have, you know, fiberglass horses that are painted, and when you get past a few hundred of those, it becomes kitsy and clutter and not very attractive, but, you know, in designated places, if we kept it in check, I think it could be okay. Where I'm struggling with on this procedure is the very front end. How specific is the Cultural Resource Advisory Committee gonna be? Are they gonna say, "Wow, it'd be great if we had a painting of a dog, so let's, let's go out and try to get artists to do a painting of a dog." Is it that specific, or is it more, "We just want a mural that reflects our past," or...
Yeah, I think it would be more in concept. So if it is, say, an idea, say, if Commissioner Urban came to the meeting, or if he sent an email to one of, someone on the advisory committee and said, "Look, I really think in this spot, it'd be awesome to have a piece that resembled pottery." And it would then just be...
Okay.
Sort of bullets and ideas and really relying on the artists to create a vision just based on, say, these parameters.
And then just one other quick comment. I noticed that one of the bullet points here was that it couldn't advertise anything for sale, and I will say that I was recently in Belmont, North Carolina, and they have repainted some vintage advertising like Coca-Cola from the twenties or whatever. It's really charming, and I would hate to not, not maybe do that if we had an opportunity. Adds a certain charm, some of the old vintage ads and things that were certainly here at one time. I wouldn't be opposed to having that as public art. Copperton? Sumner?
Any other questions? Mr. Milton?
Just as a follow-up, Mayor, is, is it appropriate, I, I wasn't on this board, I was on planning when the mural discussion began six or seven years ago, but would it be appropriate to ask staff to revisit and bring that document and the genesis of the mural program, just to revisit it and see why we're here in, in the first place?
I think that would be a reasonable request. Can you do that for us?
Yes.
At a future meeting? Okay. I think, you know, if you'll note that this was put on for, basically for information, there's no motion this evening, but this is a process we need to go through, and, and as you mentioned, Mr. Milton, it's, you know, we maybe go, need to go back to the beginning and hash through this to truly understand where we got started in its direction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you on that, Corey. If you'll remain there, next item twelve B is celebrating Matthews Art Mural on North Trade Street.
Yes. So, this piece shown here, we're, we're calling Celebrating Matthews. It's one that was produced by a local artist, Carol Hamburg, and, oh, I'm sorry, Hambridge. This, I'll say, this is a piece that's been through a couple of renditions. Again, it's one of those, just thinking about the process in place, essentially it's, what the committee has done is took that initial look at it, gave some feedback, the artist went back and made some revisions, additional feedback, and I'll say a second, you know, set of revisions. This is a piece that's planned for the side of 189 North Trade Street, the side of the building that faces the Temple Mojo. Size-wise, it is roughly eleven by seventeen feet. Again, if I had to pick a vision statement that this sort of encapsures, certainly it's a vibrant, pedestrian-friendly downtown and a small-town feeling that, say, I see very closely resembles Matthews. As one who's not very good at really describing art, maybe I just need to ask for some feedback, some thoughts on the piece and the location.
Mr. Mint?
You know, a lot of times we're up here and we're looking at something, whether it's a building or something, and Commissioner Milton will always say, "But that's not Matthews. It doesn't have that Matthews look," and a lot of times we struggle with saying, "Well, what does Matthews look like?" This particular piece, to me, describes what Matthews is like at its best. This rendition is from the twenty-fifth anniversary poster of Matthews Alive, and that's part of Matthews that we all love, we enjoy, and our town is recognized by many, many places over the entire United States by having such a great Matthews Alive parade. And it's gonna give a piece of delight to everybody who drives down Trade Street, walks down Trade Street, and sees it. So, to me, this is Matthews. I think it's absolutely terrific, and Carol did a wonderful job.
Any other comments, questions, or motion? Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Maureen, if you can scroll so we see the very bottom of it, I really like the fact that the people observing the parade are sort of off the... I really like the fact that the people observing the parade are sort of off the frame, so to speak, and it, it draws you in almost like they're watching TV. And that's an outside-the-box thought from the artist and I appreciate that for what it's worth.
And if you'll notice, Jeff, the hearts are turning in, I mean, the flower petals are turning into hearts and they're floating off of the mural as well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the celebrating Matthews mural installation on the wall of 189 North Trade Street in downtown Matthews.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I'd like to recognize the town attorney.
Just a quick question for Corey, Mayor. When we talked about this several weeks ago, one thing I mentioned was, was to get permission from Matthews Alive, since that's a separate independent corporation. If they consented to the use of this by the town, and I don't know, I never heard back from you, did we, did you get that?
I'm sorry, yes, we did get it in written form.
We're good then. Didn't want to step on their corporate theme without their permission.
Okay, very good point. Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Next item is consider speed limit adjustments. And Susan Habina-Wallard is here to discuss that.
Thank you, Mayor and Manager, Mayor and Commissioners. Make sure I'm set here. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about speed limits. Normally, this goes on consent agenda. However, based on the experience with the Fullwood speed limit from last summer, where it was pulled from consent agenda, and also getting to know all of you, you like to see the work behind the scenes and know what goes on behind a lot of these data-driven decisions. So I discussed with Hazen and we thought it would be a good idea to put this on as a new item so that you can hear the behind-the-scenes work and have the opportunity to ask questions because I want you to have the best information that you can have to make your decisions. So I put together a small presentation for you, which is in your packet as well. About, so eight speed limit requests, or requests were considered in the past year. Five of them are coming before you tonight. Three of them were denied by NCDOT. Those were ones that staff sent up to NCDOT and they did their data analysis and recommended that the speed limits stay the same, which is 45 on Pleasant Plains Road, in the vicinity of 45 on Sam Newell, close to 74, and on McKee Road from Weddington to Pleasant Plains. But the other five, NCDOT did recommend to move forward and also one of these is on a town street. This pictogram here, I, I put on here as a reminder to all of you and everyone in the room as to why speed limits are such an issue right now. Under the guidance of the town board, the town is developing quite nicely, bringing more people to the town, bringing a lot of residential, especially in the downtown area. Thanks to our friends at the DOT, our streets are getting improved and bringing sidewalks and bicycle facilities. But as we bring that traffic and as we bring those vulnerable users, the bicyclists and pedestrians, we need to make sure that they feel safe and are safe on our streets. A pedestrian hit at 40 miles an hour by a vehicle traveling 40 miles an hour, only one out of 10 survives. 30 miles an hour, the vehicle's going 35, out of 10 survive. And if the vehicle's going 20 miles an hour, nine out of 10 pedestrians will survive that crash. The source is from the Vision Zero Network. So the first one I want to show you today is at Crestdale Middle School. This was requested by Sergeant Archer and the school principal out of concern for the safety of the students who walk to school and the officers who are out on Sam Newell Road directing traffic. They also requested a flashing beacon for the school zone. I forwarded to NCDOT to evaluate. They said, yeah, but first, we have to shift the 35 mile an hour speed limit right now. Sam Newell from 51 all the way up to this point, which I'm sorry doesn't show up so well, but it's right by the school driveway, is 35 and at that point, it's 45 up to 74. That needs to shift to encompass the entire school zone. So the first, if you're reading the DOT ordinance, bless you. Charlie and I have both been through them multiple times and we do feel they're accurate, that it's now extending the 35 and shortening the 45 limits to this point. And then the second inaction is for the school's speed zone to be set in this area in front of the school. The NCDOT will install static signs for the school zone, but they won't, they won't install the flashing beacon. And I think all of our other schools, except for Butler, do have the flashing beacons. The second request is for South Trade Street. If you're heading out of town on Trade Street, as this resident does, as you approach the crosswalk, where the greenways here on your left and axes on your right, you have a crosswalk here and a speed limit 35 sign right in your line of sight. This sends mixed messages to drivers. And we, I, staff agreed with the resident that it would be in the best interest of the town for the pedestrians crossing here to move that speed limit sign out of that view space of the driver. I forwarded it to DOT to evaluate and they agreed. And the recommendation is to move the speed limit sign just one block down to be over here at the Realigned Country Place. Third request, requested by the residents of the Crestdale community, to, there's a section of 35 miles an hour on East Charles Street. And the request is to reduce it to 25. Why? Well, we have 25 in this section here by trade and we have 25 in this section here once you cross the railroad tracks. And they, there's a sidewalk that's, it's pretty close to the road along Charles Street and they would like to have it be 25 miles an hour there as well. They also requested speed humps. Speed humps are eligible in 35 mile an hour speed limit streets. They're eligible in 25 mile an hour speed limit streets. So we said, well, let's take care of the speed limit issue first and then we'll talk about any other traffic calming measures that need to be taken. This is a town-maintained street. So I undertook a speed study for you. Traditional speed limit studies focus on volume and speed data. The volumes here are, it's about 3,200 up to Buckley, about 2,200 in the remaining piece from Buckley, as said, to Crestdale, but that's because the counter was between those spaces. On both of those counters, 85th percentile was 36 and 38. But when you think about that, the data shows that twice as many drivers are going under 35 than are going over 35, twice as many. So people obviously want to drive slower here and they feel like they're sandwiched between those 25 miles an hour and it didn't seem unreasonable to expect that they would, we could just continue that speed limit. It used to be that engineers set the speed limits based on the 85th percentile. But fortunately for us, the Federal Highway Administration issued a statement that said, "Speed limits shall not be set solely on 85th percentile" because there's so many other factors that go on, so many other factors that we didn't consider four decades ago. So I pulled a 2017 Institute of Transportation Research Engineers out of Raleigh. They did a study for North Carolina DOT, Guidance on How to Set Speed Limits. And it's this great five-page form. I filled it out, I completed it, and the result is a checklist. And these are the results of the checklist for Charles Street. And here, just to orient you on the map again, this is Charles Street going over to Tank Town. Trade is this little bit right here. It's currently 25 miles an hour in this section, then it's set at 35 and then back down to 25. So based on the guidance from the NCDOT document, speed limits, you have to consider the road classification, the area type, the purpose of the road. An increase in density generally supports lower speeds. Town of Matthews, especially in the downtown areas, increasing in density. Let's also consider the fact that the sportsplex is here and we're expecting more drivers, more out-of-town drivers who may not be familiar with the area and set the expectation that they should drive a slower speed. Driveways and intersections, increase in access generally supports lower speeds. We have about 20 driveways in this section and according to the guidance, that supports lower speeds. Multimodal facilities, an increase in pedestrian bicycle volume, we are expecting and we are probably present this information to you with the mobility study, we expect bicycle and pedestrian activity to increase along this quarter as people like to move through and around our downtown and get over to the sportsplex. Let's make them feel comfortable and safe on our streets. And this, the fourth one here is shoulder, the wider the shoulders of the roads, the faster people can safely traverse that. Well, if you go out there, there's like six-inch shoulders out there. There's no wide shoulders. And so that would support lower speeds because of that recovery zone is just not there. Two more criteria, one is the liming curves. Windy, curvy road supports lower speeds. Well, this is a pretty straight shot, so this does not support the lower speed recommendation. And the last is the operating speed study, an increase of 50th or 80th, 85th percentile. I shared with you that the 85th percentile is 36 and 38, which indicates that some people feel okay driving 35 on this road. Included a couple pictures for your consideration here. You can see the, the small shoulders, you can see the sidewalk is pretty close to the road. There are a little bit of vertical curve issues as you pull out of driveways, which would support a slower speeds. Staff is recommending that to keep the speed limit consistent along East Charles Street and extend that 25 mile an hour all the way to Tank Town Road. The TAC heard this and all the items on Thursday night at their meeting and there were some members from the Crestdale community that came to the TAC meeting to share their support of this recommendation. The last one I bring before you today is requested by a resident who frequents Sardis Road. That resident shared with us that the City of Charlotte recently lowered their speed limit on Sardis Road to 40 miles an hour while we still maintain a 45 mile an hour in Matthews. That resident was wondering if we could please post 45 mile an hour speed limit signs so people knew that they could speed up in this half-mile section before they hit 51. I forwarded it to the DOT because they are in charge of putting up signs on their roads and they said, what? We think maybe we should keep a 40 mile an hour speed limit here, consistent with Charlotte, but also consistent with Matthews changing land use. Keep in mind that this is the start of one of our NCDOT projects, the 51 project from Sardis to John. As part of that project, we will be getting a multi-use path in this first section here and a pedestrian crossing to connect these two recreational areas here, the park and this farmland. So we are anticipating, as a result of the 51 widening project, there will be, it'll be much more attractive for pedestrians to use this facility. So we agreed with the NCDOT recommendation to extend the 40 mile an hour speed limit from the Charlotte limits to NC 51. Sorry, that wasn't the last one. This is an information-only item. This is Weddington Road, again, requested by a resident who drives through here to reduce it to 35 miles an hour. It's 45, starting at this, I can't remember the side street, forgive me, all the way down through to the county line. Forwarded it to the DOT. They completed their speed study. They did a really comprehensive one, but also understanding that there's going to be an interchange here. Will introduce more traffic signals in this area and also the fact that it is residential and commercial on all four corners lends itself to a lower speed limit as well as traversing through the new interchange. This request, I also coordinated with City of Charlotte DOT. They went, they had their special program that they typed all the data into and that that output was also for 35 mile an hour speed limit. So this is supported by Charlotte. They will be the ones to sign the ordinance and the DOT will post the signs, but I wanted to let you all know that had, had come through Matthews and the DOT supported it as well as Charlotte. Lots of requested actions tonight because those were, those were five speed limits. The first two are in reference to the school. The third one is for South Trade and then the last is Sardis. These are all the DOT to have the town clerk sign the DOT ordinances so they can move forward with that. And then the last one is to enact the speed limit ordinance of 25 miles an hour on East Charles Street. And as a reminder, on the Fullwood one from last year, you all also set an effective date of when staff should post the signs and thus start the new speed limit. Any questions?
Susan, on the Sardis Road speed limit, I think it's, it's obvious with so many neighborhoods merging onto that road that 40 miles per hour is appropriate. But you mentioned the crosswalk and I thought, in looking at the maps, the plans, that that was aligned with Sardis Park?
I'm pretty sure it's along with Sardis Park, you know.
Okay. So I didn't quite understand the property on the other side of the road. I mean, there's no, there's nothing going on over there. That's a private piece of property.
It's private, is it going to stay private? My apologies. I, I thought that that was also part of the park. My apologies. But at least, we'll get back to the map there on Sardis. It provides, this crossing provides opportunity for people to get over to the multi-use path from the other neighborhoods.
Right, right. And then gift to the park as well.
That's right.
Okay. Mr. Higgin?
Is 40 miles per hour a common speed limit? I don't hardly ever see, I don't recall even really that portion of Sardis being 40. It's always 35 or 45, enough, 40.
You're, I mean, you're correct. It's mostly, we see it in the fives. I did not ask Charlotte about how they arrived at the 40, but I, my assumption is that they used US Limits 2, which is a standard software that most municipalities use to set speed limits and that's how they arrived at 40.
It just seems odd. It may confuse the, at least initially, until tickets start getting written, I guess. It's, it's an odd speed limit for sure.
I think my experience is if anybody's going 40, I'd be, I'd be applauding them for being speedy.
It, it could be that since this is mostly reverse frontage and not a lot of houses and driveways front Sardis, that that extra five was, that was the deciding factor on that from the software. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Mr. Milton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and motion that we take the recommended action and consent to speed limit ordinances as recommended by NCDOT, as listed in Susan's memo to the Mayor and Board of Commissioners dated July 16, 2019. Items one and two include set a maximum speed limit of 35 miles an hour on Sam Newell from 51 extending six tenths of a mile northward. Establish a school speed zone of 25 miles per hour on Sam Newell for Crestdale School during bell times. Set a maximum speed of 25 miles an hour on South Trade Street from Country Place to East John. Set a maximum speed limit of 40 miles per hour on Sardis Road from 51 to the town limits. And item two, to set a maximum speed of 25 miles an hour on East Charles Street from North Trade Street to Tank Town Road. And for these changes to take, take effect September 1st.
You want to put also upon the installation of proper speed limit signs?
Correct, yes, sir. I'll include that in the motion.
Second.
Motion made. Mr. Miller seconded?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next item on the agenda is 12D Equity Lease Program and a call on the Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the concept that the board has in front of them tonight is a different philosophy than the town has historically taken when it comes to its fleet vehicles. And for many, many years, the concept has been pay for vehicles in full and then drive them as absolutely long as possible. And that can certainly seem financially advantageous, but there are some issues that that can also bring with it. It can bring with it unpredictable repair costs, expensive repair costs, downtime when those vehicles are out of service, decreased fuel efficiency. There can also sometimes be safety concerns with an older fleet. It's not going to have the advanced safety features that newer vehicles are going to have and you can sometimes miss recall notices for those vehicles. So we wanted to take a look at, is there another way to evaluate our fleet and is there another way to consider how we do business when it comes to our fleet vehicles? So we've been having discussions with Enterprise Fleet Management, or EFM, for what's called an equity lease program. And a lot of folks are familiar with a traditional lease program, which is you make your payments, you turn back in your vehicle and the vehicle goes away and there's no equity. So the equity lease program is a little bit different where you make payments on the vehicles for a period of time, typically about 60 months, and Enterprise is evaluating those vehicles for their kind of peak performance. And so what they're looking at is what is the market doing? So there's kind of a peak life cycle in a vehicle where it still has low miles, it's still a relatively late model year, and that's going to have its highest resale value. So the idea is... to have its highest resale value. So the idea is to use the vehicle for kind of its peak life usage and then send it back out to the market. Enterprise sells it for us, and then we actually get that equity back. So that is cash back in hand that we can then turn around, and if we're still using this program, we can turn it back into the cost of the program. So the analytics that Enterprise uses are the same that they have in place for their 2 million cars that they sell annually. And so they have this down to a fine science of that exact time that you're going to get the most resale value out of a vehicle. So having a fleet that has newer vehicles in it is really going to cut down on your maintenance costs and your downtime in particular. So just as a quick snapshot, in eight months of, or excuse me, the first nine months of last fiscal year, that just the police department alone spent $30,000 in parts and $50,000 in labor on their fleet and lost two vehicles out of their fleet that just became too expensive to repair due to mechanical failures. So we do have an aging fleet in a lot of cases, and it is really putting significant strain on some of our departments. And so this is a way to evaluate whether or not this is a good program, and is this a way to have a newer fleet that isn't necessarily going to cost us more money. So once, if we do move forward with this, once it is time to turn the vehicle back in, Enterprise handles all of that for us as well for a flat, small fee. And we have talked to a number of other localities across the state that are doing this. This is not a new program. It's been in place for many, many years. The Raleigh Police Department has been doing this for, I believe, well over 15 years, and many other localities are moving to this as a model to follow. And they report high satisfaction levels that they do have reduced maintenance costs and, as well as predictable pricing for the program. So we put together a couple of proposals and costs for you. The first one is taking a look at, Maureen, if you wouldn't mind going to option one, if you keep scrolling. So, thank you. So what you have here, these are all of the public safety vehicles that are funded in the current year budget. So there are nine vehicles between our police department and our fire department that we have the cash in our budget to pay for, but that we would like to consider this as a pilot program with these vehicles to see how we feel about this program by turning them in to this equity lease program. But if you scroll to the second page, the one that we also wanted to bring to your attention is those exact same nine vehicles with the addition of two additional vehicles for our police department, which would bring the total to 11. And that is to help them with the additional police officers that we added to the police department at the beginning of this fiscal year. But when we added those positions, we did not add vehicles to help support them. So we are in even a little bit more of a bind than we would be in a typical year by looking to add additional staff without really kind of an adequate fleet to house them in. So if you look at the prices there, if we moved forward with this, again, the concept here is that we would be making a monthly payment on each of those vehicles. You can see that column a little bit over halfway over. We would make that for a term of about 60 months, and then they would sell the vehicle for us. And the equity that they expect that we would get back at the end of the term is on the far right column. And so if you go down to the, the lower box, the annual lease payments for those 11 vehicles would be about $94,000 annually. We would have a small down payment just in the first year, but that is really just because of some of the aftermarket equipment that is added to some of our police vehicles. If you look in the aftermarket column, to outfit a police vehicle, it's over $9,000 in equipment. And so that is really just due to those costs. And then at the end of the five-year term, there's a very conservative estimate of the amount of equity that we would have returned to us. So our total outlay, if we were to move forward with option two, is expected to be $445,426. And that is compared to the $379,560 that we currently have budgeted for nine vehicles currently. So if we were to move forward with this, the idea would be that we would make year one of lease payments. So we would spend this year for 11 vehicles, $113,344. We would then take the remaining cash in hand that we currently have budgeted for these vehicles and put it into the CIP so that the money is waiting for the additional lease payments. So we're not coming back to the board looking for an additional $100,000 next year that we had not already planned for. If we move forward with the 11 vehicles, that would catch up with us eventually because it is more vehicles than we had originally intended. So the small difference, we would be looking to need five years from now, and I think it was FY '25 was when any of that would catch up to us. So again, this is a new concept. And one thing that I did want to add that was not in the budget is from a procurement standpoint, we are a member of Sourcewell, and they have awarded EFM their contract for this fleet management process. So it has already been through a full procurement process and RFP process, and they were the selected vendor for this. So we are on solid ground from a procurement standpoint to be able to move forward with Enterprise if we wish to do so. But we do want this to be a pilot program. We've never done anything like this. So we would be looking to just try this year one, continue to evaluate it, make sure that this is good for the town, that this is working for us, that it's meeting our expectations. If it didn't, we can back out. We can buy out the remaining cost of the vehicle and completely end the program. We're not on the hook. And if we do like it, then this is something that we would look to eventually transition more of the fleets that we tend to run through on a faster basis, like police cars, like some of our fire response vehicles, to hopefully keep a newer fleet on the road, have a higher level of reliability, lower maintenance and repair costs, with hopefully not, not that much of a greater investment than what we're currently having to make.
Becky, on the police vehicles, we would still be responsible for adding the light bars, radios, et cetera, to the cars?
So the interesting thing about this program is they work with the departments that have the vehicles in the program, and we pick exactly what we want, and then they take care of all of that for us. So that is the $9,368 cost. That is a true cost. Those are actually our quotes from our vendors for lights, for striping, for the cages in the back, all of that. So if we order a vehicle, they obtain it through the lowest procurement contract that they're able to get it for. And then they take it to these aftermarket installers. They install everything. They stripe it. They actually take care of tag title for us, and it's delivered with a permanent plate, and it's ready to roll once they take it off of the truck.
Okay, so when we go back to sell it, there's, because the program's set up that way, there's really no decreased value in the vehicle because of the equipment and because of the...
Right. So we have, right. So we have the ability to remove any of the equipment that we want to. So if that cage could be reused, if they haven't changed the format of the new vehicles, we can pull that out and have it installed into the next round of vehicle if we'd like to, which would be a cost savings at that time. Sometimes if you change models, that's just not going to be an option. But we definitely try to reuse everything that we can. They take care of removing all of the striping for us. So we're able to really just kind of hang on to what we want, and then it rolls away, and they deal with it from there.
Okay. Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Becky, I, I think you addressed this, but because of my own ignorance and misunderstanding, I need to hear it again. In the budget this year, we approved purchasing five police vehicles.
It was nine vehicles total.
Nine. This is, this is how we're going to do that. This isn't in addition to.
Correct.
We're buying those nine vehicles or obtaining those through this program. I just needed to hear you say that.
We're not getting 18. I think they'd love that, but no, we're sticking with the nine.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Higgin?
Becky, have we received a quote from any other vendor besides Enterprise?
We have not. Due to them being the awarded contract through Sourcewell that takes care of the RFP process. So our, the RFP process has been completed by Sourcewell, and they were the awarded bidder for that. So, so this is not a separate RFP that we have gone out to solicit bids for.
What is that based on? Is it based on cost?
It's based on cost, yeah. That, Sourcewell has a great website that I'm happy to send you a link to that shows their entire RFP selection process, the bids that were opened, the awarded contracts from start to finish. And the town has used Sourcewell for a number of other things in the past.
Mr. Urban?
I was, when I first read through this, I was a little bit reluctant, I guess because Ms. Charlie's always said, "You always will do what you've always done," and "I always buy the vehicle." But then, prior to our earlier meeting tonight, I was speaking to both chiefs, and there's an unintended positive in all this, is the fact that apparently, from a lease management standpoint, fleet management aspect of it, we're internalizing that role right now. And I'm sure Chief Pennington probably could nail down the time aspect of that. We actually have a officer sitting there doing fleet management. So what is his time value not being on the street and doing the things we need to do as protecting the citizens of this town? So that had a huge win for me from that aspect of it. So the manpower savings there. There's manpower savings on CJ's side of the fence, because I understand, like the US Air Force, we have our crown VIXs all sitting down there, and we cannibalize them to get the other ones to run. And sort of takes that, we're no longer a junkyard dealer. And we're, we're taking and empowering somebody else with all the headaches. And since this is just a pilot program, we get to see how well that all works. And we get to put people back on the street and get them back to doing what they're supposed to be doing, not managing our vehicles. So I, I definitely support this.
Any other comments or questions?
Ditto.
So do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make that a motion that we approve option two of the pilot equity lease program and direct the town manager to enter into a contract enterprise fleet management as proposed, based on the memo dated, let's go all the way back to the beginning, July 19, 2019, from Becky Hawk, Assistant Town Manager, to the board.
I'll second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We need to back up a bit to the previous agenda item. And the motion was correct. It was made by Mr. Melton, but there is a question about the funding source for the $8,000 towards the cost sharing with CMS for the installation of the flashing lights. So, Mr. Manager, would you like to address that, please?
Yes, sir. So we make this school crossing, our speed zone as safe as it can be. We do recommend the flashing beacons. Susan and I talked about it.
Oh dang it. I, I felt like, thank you. It's on. So I, in talking to Susan, I did feel like CMS has lifted this up along with us and that they should share the cost with us. Have you reached out to them? Did they say they would?
So Sergeant Archer actually reminded me that I had put it in writing to her and the school principal that a cost sharing would probably be expected by the board. But I have not had a chance with it being summer and with Sergeant Archer being out last week to be able to wrap that up, and me being out as well. So I have not.
So we're recommending at this point that it be a cross-share program, and that CMS split the cost. And so the maximum not to exceed amount budgeted from the town of Matthews would be $8,000.
So...
But $8,000 was the total cost?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I expect it'd be closer to 16 because we also need to do the electric and, yeah, staff time.
So do we need to go through a budget?
So what we'll do is bring back a budget amendment at the next meeting to show the appropriation of the $8,000 in the consent agenda.
All right. Sounds good.
Good catch.
Okay, moving on. 12E, consider addition of part-time temporary police department
Good evening, Mayor, Board. This is a request to consider an addition of a part-time police department position pay classification or addition to our pay classification plan. The reason behind this, and just to give you a little bit of background and to highlight some of the information provided in the memo to the board, we are consistently, we consistently reflect a modern-day police department with our current staffing and layout. Now, with our accessibility and our desire to obviously be presentable and available to the, to the citizens of Matthews, we are experiencing about 1,400 walk-in reports a year. Now, those are just the reports that we take. In addition to those 1,400 walk-in reports, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of more walk-ins that require a police officer to come back to headquarters to either answer questions or to provide some, some counsel to the individual who has walked in asking for assistance. Now, historically, our department is made up of our patrol division, which is staffed by full-time police officers. Those police officers are then assigned a geographic region or what we call a beat. So depending on who is available, that officer is then called out of that beat to respond back to headquarters and take that either report or provide information to our citizen that's come in. Currently, our duty desk or our, our record section is, is staffed by two ladies in there who greet the walk-ins, take any information they need, then call our dispatch center to have a police officer respond back. As you can imagine, that type of process in some ways can take an extensive period of time. If the officer is in a beat that's far away from here, if he's the available officer to come back, could be 20, 30-minute response time, which does start to get negative response from our citizens, obviously waiting that long for them to come back. And then secondarily, calling that officer out of that beat takes him out of his primary responsibility, which is to be there and available for what we're looking for is a shorter response time in our priority threes. So our, our proposal and what I'm requesting is that the board consider the addition of a part-time temporary police department position to our pay classification. And in that, actually, we're asking for two different. One would be the addition of a sworn member, which, as you can see under financial impact, we'll talk about that in a minute, but the other would be a non-sworn position, both essentially doing similar duties. The sworn position would be at a part-time level. So the temporary part-time duty desk officer who is sworn would be a grade 17, which is equivalent to our patrol officers that are doing the job as a police officer out there every day. And our temporary part-time duty assistant, which is a non-sworn position, would be paid at a grade 13. Now, the reason I think we can kind of get away with both of these classifications is priority and preference will be given to the non-sworn who is either a retired police officer or a police officer who does not wish to act in that capacity at that time, if that makes sense. Because a non-sworn can work that duty desk as long as he understands the reporting requirements, understands the North Carolina state law, understands how we counsel and send victims, if you will, of crimes to get assistance. The sworn member, we're obviously going to pay at a higher grade rate because they require us to maintain their certification, qualifications, in-service, those type of things. So we're requesting that you look at this as a possibility. And then secondarily, I'll tell you that the funding is not an additional funding source for these two positions. We are going to use our current overlap in our salaries to fund this on a temporary basis. Only until the need goes away will we hire these part-time positions, and then when there's no need, the part-time position will lay in wait.
Any questions? Mr. Higgin?
I don't have a question. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the addition of the temporary part-time duty desk officer and duty desk assistant to the pay and classification plan as proposed in Chief Pennington's memo dated July 17.
Second.
Motion been, been made by Mayor Pro Tem Higgin, seconded by Commissioner DeMint. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. The next item is receiving information on Pleasant Plains Road multi-use path. And we have Dana Stojcinski here to discuss that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here to talk about Pleasant Plain Road. It's a multi-use path. EB 5779 is its NC DOT number. So let me give you a little background about this project. You've heard about it before. In fact, it was submitted in 2014, and you can see the limits of the projects. So this is Matthews. It's down here in the south, sort of east or west part of the, the town. We've got the... We've got the limits of the original project, it was up here on Weddington and Trade, Pleasant Plains, all the way down to McKee. And so we got this project funded in 2014, and then there was money allocated to the CIP for about $55,000. And we then went through a revision to, like, sort of revise the cost estimate. Well, actually, we went for the scope, and it came back very significant, because we have a bridge here, and that bridge is very costly to redeck. And so what we did was we reduced the project limits. So just north of 485, we created the project limits there, all the way down to McKee Road. So what happened in this section is, over the past course of five years or so, there's been additional sidewalks put in. We had a, at the Squirrel Lake Park, there's going to be a NC DOT project with the town to do a crossing, as well as, we have had, we have small portion of the bridge, we have a three-foot sidewalk already on that portion of the bridge. So we have some ways to get around over the bridge, it's not ideal, but because of the cost of it to redeck the bridge, that was just, I mean, it was almost eight to 10,000, eight to 10 million dollars to add in that additional bridge work. So we re-scoped it, so we revised the revised cost estimate, and it was still much greater than that initial $300,000 or $275,000 that we put in, in the 2014 North Carolina TIP. So basically, we, you know, we looked at all this, and I'll sort of go through all the data with you, but if you all choose to move forward with this project, there is available funding through CRTPO, our Transportation Planning Organization, in the fall to hopefully capture in order to move forward with this project. So I'll talk to you a little bit about the current conditions out there. So currently in the ground, we've got a five-foot sidewalk, one, I'm just going to say this is the east side, the east side of Pleasant Plains, here on the north side of 485. We've got that three-foot sidewalk here, over the bridge. And then the rest of this is a five-foot sidewalk going all the way down to McKee. There is lots of generators and attractors, so we've got, up here, Squirrel Lake Park, folks down here, obviously want to get to that amenity. We've got neighborhoods, we've got a tennis and racket club on the other side of the street, we've got more neighborhoods. And then we go down here, and we've got this piece of land. I don't know what it's going to be yet, but obviously, whatever that's going to be, it's going to generate pedestrians, it's going to generate bicyclists. So we want to make sure that we are covered on, you know, creating a pedestrian-walking environment for our community. We also have the extension of McKee Road down in the corner. So we've got a lot of things going on in this area of our community. We are proposing this 10-foot multi-use path, that's going to be on the west side. And this is, you know, that's going to basically go from McKee Road all the way up. And then we will have to create some sort of mid-block crossing to make sure that we can get everyone from one side to the other, as well as making sure that everyone, because we're only going to probably have, we have to let the design process work out for the bridge, but we'll probably have it only on one side of the bridge, just for the sheer fact that it's not going to be able to be expanded. So, the bottom line is, this project costs a lot more than we initially scoped it, than initially thought. We had, in the original cost, $275,000. The current cost, and as we all know, prices are escalating, we did, I guess about two years ago, they did go back, Susan went back, and we did a, re-cost, and it was, you know, 1.2 million or so, and they tried to take it through the CIP, I'm sorry, they tried to take it through the spot process, NC DOT's prioritization process, but it didn't get any traction. So we still have our original project in, NC DOT's on their list, but it's only still for this initial amount of $275,000. We've got, basically, we've got the 80%, which is 1.7 million, and then the local match, which is $430,000 or so. And so this program, if we do go after the money at CRTPO, it will be an 80/20 match, it will be a reimbursement program, just like Sam Knoll that I spoke about two weeks ago. And so this is, even though this cost is much greater than that, you know, than our initial cost, we still get a lot of benefit for the 20/80 match. Currently in our CIP, we've got, like I said, $55,000 divided up into two years. Clearly, we would need more money in our CIP. In fiscal year '20, we would need 61,000 and so, and then fiscal year '21, we'd need $313,620. And that's a CIP difference of $320,000 down here. So it's a tall order. We have, you know, we could make it work if you all didn't want to move forward with it. As we, as I've just showcased, we have no cost estimates for that particular process. We would have to do some mid-block crossings. As you can see, we, and I can flip back to the previous slide here, if we take this away, we're leaving a chunk of roadway with no multi-use path, and we would have to create, you know, there's a little bit of sidewalk right there, and then, you know, ultimately, whatever's being done down here will have to have some sort of sidewalk. So our staff recommendation is to move forward because of the 80/20 match, but, you know, obviously, you all have to make that decision. So here are the three action items, and one is to execute a contract with the design firm, Ramey Kemp, and that, we went through a process to select that consultant. We also would like to appropriate funds from the general fund at the amount of $306,900. And then all of that, again, will be reimbursed, and that would be through the planning and design phase, not right-of-way. All of it will be reimbursed, except that $61,000. And then have CRTPO, have us apply for the CRTPO dollars at that total amount of 1.9 million, and then get, we'd basically get all but 300,000 of that back. So that's the 80/20 match that we are talking about. And I'm sure you all have lots of questions, so I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Dana, on the Brightmore side, the existing sidewalk, that's, once the McKee Road punch-through is constructed, McKee Road will have a multi-use path.
Yes.
Was there any consideration given to, instead of coming on the southwest side with a new multi-use path, widening or improving the existing sidewalk, because it's going to connect to, you would have multi-use path connecting to multi-use path?
And we did look at that. Basically, they would have to rip up, and Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, rip up the entire five-foot path to do the 10-foot path. There would be no cost savings.
Mr. Higgin?
Do you know if there's any possibility, I'm sorry, I know you mentioned it, but the three-foot sidewalk across the bridge, is there any way to improve that? Because that is like death waiting to happen. I see small children riding bikes shaking, and you fall off and you're in the road.
And that's, hopefully, through the design process, we will, we do have someone, as a part of the sub-consultant team, to look at shifting the traffic on the bridge slightly and giving a little bit more cushion to one side of the road. We don't have a whole lot of room to work with, but I think Scott Cole has amenable to shifting some of that traffic.
That's one of the worst crossings, I think.
We'd love to build a new bridge there.
Yeah. And the second question I have is, how are we off almost an order of magnitude on the cost? I mean, how are we 10 times under the expected cost? That's pretty phenomenal.
So I will put that squarely on NC DOT. With my predecessor, we'd gone to the DOT and asked them for estimates for the various multi-use paths. They came back to us with that estimate. We told them they're crazy. They said, "No, we sent to Raleigh, that's what they said. This will be good." So we kept it as a placeholder, so we had a spot in the tip, and realized that we'd probably have to come to this point and actually get a good estimate and real money.
Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
I kind of find it difficult to kind of act on this one tonight, because I think I'm feeling stuck in a little bit of a vacuum, because there's a higher CIP number now that we have to deal with. We've got $55,000. So I'm wondering, with the other projects we've been talking about, where are we doing this money dance as well?
And I will clarify, I didn't mention that it was in the fourth quartile, and it was, I will, and it's the project's defense, it was within this Carolina Thread Trail Cluster projects. So it didn't really, I don't think, got highlighted as an individual project within that. So that's how, you know, in terms of where it fell out.
That's also important to me, but I guess the whole thing is, I can't look at this project independent of all the other projects. And to Commissioner Higgin's part, the numbers are just sort of running away, and yet we have other projects in the first quartile that we've been talking about. So I would like to maybe, personally, I'd like to sort of hit the pause button and sort of see how this has affected things. The second thing is, we also need to back up a little bit. The 40% contingency could dramatically change the dynamic. If the $2.1 million is fairly accurate, that 40% contingency comes off the top. So our share, if you do the math, the local match would go from $430,000 to $333,000. So I'm trying to balance this, I mean, you know, from that aspect of it. But I would, when you, Mr. Mayor, when you go back to CRTPO, talk to them about, first of all, they're raising a giant red flag in front of a bull, saying, "Let's do a 40% contingency." Because now all the bidders in this world are going, "God, they're going to pad this thing, I'm not going to bump it up any higher anyway, I have no reason to sharpen my pencil." So they've just kind of opened up Pandora's box. But maybe there's a method, a methodology with how much money they're spending, is to have third-party estimators, people that are bonded or in some capacity or something like that, that are professionals, and not just somebody that's looking at a means guide and throwing up a number. I think they could do better, because that's ridiculous, and we're budgeting based on these hypotheticals. So that's just my two cents. I'm a little worried that this is fourth quartile, the numbers suit a roof, what's to do to our first quartile things? How does that fit in all the rankings? If we keep talking about these projects individually, I'm afraid when you come back in November, you're going to say, "22 million dollars later!"
So it's great points. I think one of the questions Becky and I have tried to sort through, and, you know, we're getting very close to hiring a finance director, is how do we put this all together in a logical fashion? For instance, the improvements to 74, right? That was based on $5.5 million. They delayed the project. We don't know what that end cost is going to be. I do think DOT is, they think very differently from us, and it's just like the bridge over, the bridge that's way behind schedule there on South Trade Street. We asked them to put out a press release, and they're not here, so just throw them under the bridge. They said, "What do you want us to say?" Well, part of me is like, "For heavens to Betsy, any logical person, you have to defend yourself, right? You have to explain what's going on." But they are so far removed, right? They don't face that pressure, as I think they really, literally do hunker down. And I think that 40%, I mean, CJ went out for bids for paving, and it was double. And CJ's a PE, you know, it's not like some guy like me trying to do those estimates. So I guess I am empathetic to that 40% in this environment, but I think the right thing to do may be to circle up from a finance standpoint and get everything down, best information that we have so far, kind of talk about, okay, what's fund balance going to look like? We will start to get a preliminary fund balance number here pretty soon from the auditors. I don't think they've showed up yet, but you don't, October. Let me ask this, from y'all's standpoint, if we delay, what does this do from a CRTPO standpoint?
So I will explain. So right now, there is a, going to be a fall call for projects. And this is the first time that they've done a fall call. And what they've done is they've taken all their money, and they're telling the folks in their jurisdictions that they can compete for about, I don't know, it's 50 million or so. And they're going to program those dollars out five years. So if we want to get this project funded in the next five years, our best shot is to apply when the call comes out in about three or four weeks. In addition, this, these dollars, I haven't, so these dollars, we have a memorandum of understanding with NC DOT that we're pursuing this project. We have not had, we don't have a contract yet with a consultant. There's literally a button I have to push in the data, in their data portal, to start pulling down the dollars. And we are getting closer and closer to when our dollars are going to be going away. We've got to, like, make a decision. I'm thinking by September, like, I think mid-September is when the feds close their books. So, you know, in the next few weeks, we've got to make a decision on what we want to do with this project, if we want a, if we want a good shot at the dollars, and whether we want to trigger our, you know, our dollar flow from the actual NC DOT portal.
Mr. Grue?
I agree with Commissioner, too, that we need to hold back on this. I understand the need to move forward, but we've got millions of dollars that we're putting in, all this stuff that's going with DOT, and I don't see where it's going to come from. Mr. Manager, you've got the magic wand that's going to say it's coming up. I mean, we've got over Independence Boulevard, that's sitting out there, and we've got the one going by the new apartment complex out here in front of Butler. It's going to have to be a connection made, and we want to do a little better there. So where do we end with all these large figures? I mean, it's beyond where I can comprehend.
So some of the numbers we've talked about are tourism dollars, and they're related to the sportsplex. So there are sports, I mean, there's tourism dollars that are available for the multi-use path related to the sportsplex, but there's a lot of areas that are not related to the sportsplex. And so we do think, from a staff perspective, that $5.5 million, for instance, included a tunnel underneath 74 that's behind Lowe's, you know, that's an existing greenway. So I do think there are some things that we can trim out. Another example, as I recall, is in that $5.5 million was Independence Point Boulevard. As you go towards CPCC and you fly over, there is a separate four-foot bicycle lane. That's another example, something that could be trimmed out in order to save money. So I do feel like, and we do have enough time, I think the issue for the board, and we talked about it that night, is these are literally 50-year decisions, generational decisions. In my mind, when I look at the crystal ball, I just see bad traffic, as much as hard as we're going to try on this. And then a town that's only 17 square miles, you really could get around on bicycle if you wanted to. And you could get from Pleasant Plains to downtown Matthews probably in 10 or 15 minutes, and it's a reasonable bicycle ride, maybe, I don't know, 30 or 45 minutes from walking. But I do think from a, we have to think about, how can our citizens be able to get around? Because they're, at some level, probably going to be stuck in traffic no matter what we do. I don't know what to do about this, this specific, I mean, this design is only 61,000, we'd get everything back but 61,000, and we already have budgeted 55. So we're not talking much more additional dollars. Tell me if I got the math wrong, Dana.
The actual design is $309.
Okay. And we got, go to that, you had a little ledger thing up there.
CIP, is that what you're looking for?
Hey, one thing I'm getting to, too, is, in all of this stuff, we're using DOT figures, and they're not valid. I mean, we have no idea what we're going to come up with for the figure, for what we think. They've done a figure out there, and we're taking that to be, but they have no policy, "Oh, we've missed a couple million dollars, let's add a couple more million to it." And that's a lot of money for Matthews to do without some kind of a guarantee on these projects.
I appreciate what you're saying.
Even the one that we've got, the bridge, that we've got, the path underneath it down here to Creek, I mean, that one was nowhere near what we thought it was to start with. So I'm concerned about where we're going with all these projects. I know some of it needs to be done, but I kind of agree, we need to back up and take a strong look at what we're really talking about, and maybe go back DOT and say, "How sure you use these figures? Will you guarantee them?" They won't do that.
And of course, they won't, right? The market's too dynamic.
One of the things that, going back to what Commissioner Urban asked, the discussion of the estimates on... of the estimates on road projects has been something we've been talking about for a year. There was some illusion that if, if someone with a PE were to, to stamp it, that somehow the numbers would be right, which we both know as professionals, that's, that's not gonna really work. The problem, I think, that I'm seeing is that we're getting into projects that were estimated so long ago after two thousand eight decline that we've got numbers that were being put into place based upon the costs for construction then, when people were looking for work, versus now when we can't seem to get anything done because there's not enough people to do it. So, we're struggling with that on all the projects. It's not just this one. Dana, this is, is this part of the, the state budget to go down to ten percent or does this?
Well, this is what we had hoped, that the state budget, right? This would have, if we, if that bill had, if the language had not been pulled out of the state budget, the language was basically to allow these kind of projects to go down to a ten percent match, not a twenty percent match. So, that would have been significant savings for all communities under fifty thousand. But unfortunately, that language was pulled out during negotiations during the budget.
The, this doesn't have to be until, is it middle of October? The period for submittals, August to October?
So, we...
I don't remember what I heard the other night.
Yes, the submittals do start in the next three weeks or four weeks or so. It runs for, I think, a month or so, six weeks. But there's another piece of it that's also, and I can verify and he's in there tomorrow, we have to start pulling down the dollars internal to NC DOT's portal. Perhaps we can do that and not actually, not, not trigger anything real because we're not actually spending down the dollars, we're just sort of taking a button. Because we wanna preserve, the beautiful thing about this project, even though the numbers were completely wrong, it got scored and it got prioritized, which gives this project a one-up on all the new projects that are coming into CRTPO. So, we already have a STIP number, we already have money assigned to it. And so, that gives us a higher pecking order because we are a project that is just, they see as underfunded as opposed to a new project. So, while we were grossly underestimated, it does give us a better position if you all choose to move forward with it. So, those are the, I'll check on that and let you know whether we can click on the button without actually impacting things negatively for us if we don't move forward with the project.
Okay. Mr. Higgins?
To Commissioner Query and Urban's points, Hazen, is it possible to maybe get a, a global look by August fifth of all these projects and what the financial impact is? Because we are kind of looking at these in silos. I mean, I would love to see this project built that's an eighty percent match. It looks really attractive, but, you know, to my colleague's point, I mean, we're, at some point, we have to, we have to figure out where we're getting all this money from.
Yeah, so I think the short answer is probably no. That's because it's only two weeks away. What if we did this, I mean, Dana, if you'll get back to CRTPO and see when's the last date, when's that outer state, right?
Sure, I will, yeah, I'll call them tomorrow.
Then, then we can kind of work backwards from that because I think it's a reasonable request to try to get a handle on that. Now, that handle's gonna be much easier said than done, but we will certainly do our best. The other thing is I do think the auditor will do some kind of preliminary number prior to an October or November official number. Last year, they gave us, like, I don't know if they're back-of-the-envelope numbers, but they gave us some numbers. Because I am interested, because we already got the audit numbers from last year, but we did have some, some pretty good revenues, we didn't spend all our money. I'm hoping the fund balance would grow, it's gonna grow a little bit. And I'd love to be able to say, "Look, we're expecting another five-hundred thousand dollars in the fund balance." So, as we do this math, we know, okay, well, here's, here's a little bit of more money. So, we're gonna buy as much time as we can to try to get as much information and then bring it back to you guys for some kind of decision.
To the mayor's point, we're not gonna miss this opportunity if we don't act tonight. We have at least some limited amount of time.
Right, we do, yeah, absolutely. And I'll, I'll verify those dates tomorrow with Bob Cook and I'll get all that information to you.
And Dana, you also said, if we just did the design, which is number two...
Okay, yes.
And we decided we didn't want to do anything else. Because, let's say, we decided under number three, we're worried about that three-hundred-and-eight-six-thousand dollars, they would make us pay back. If we killed the project, they would make us pay back.
So, yes, so if we don't do the, construct the project and we just do this design phase, we would owe the total three-hundred thousand dollars.
So, what if we said, "Well, we don't want to do it for five years"? I mean, in other words, does it have to be intimate? If that's the right word?
Well, I, I don't know if I can answer that. I don't know if we can. Right now, it's scheduled for nineteen. So, the reason we're, this has been on this, you know, it was funded in twenty-fourteen through that STI process, and it was funded in this fiscal year. And we're just getting started on it and they know it takes a while to ramp these projects up. So, we would have to see if the STIP unit was willing to let this project sit. I, I mean, I can make that request, I don't know.
So, are we saying we might have the silver line out here before we have this bridge?
What?
We might have the silver line out here before we have this bridge? Mr. Query.
Yeah, and I know I keep beating this thing to death, but these figures have jumped so drastically and, and we know that CJ just ran into the cost of asphalt doubled in price, if I remember it correctly. We don't know that the figures we got are half or, we don't know how accurate their figures are on this other stuff. And we're, I mean, I had thought we needed to add a bond election before we'd done the others. Now, now that wouldn't even touch it, it looks like, before it's over with. I mean, all these projects are, they're, it looks like they're just guessing at them. And I don't, I don't, I don't understand that. I'm gonna have to ask my son a little more about it since he's working with them now, about where these figures are coming from.
Yeah, I don't think they're, they're guessing at them, but they're utilizing data for the time that they're at. And in the period of time, by the time you get to this, it's five years later, all the economics have changed as far as what you can actually do.
And we're holding the ball.
Yeah. Okay, so, with this, do we want the town manager to bring this back at the second meeting in August? Is that gonna work or do we need to be...
I'll let you all know, I mean, I'll let Hazen know tomorrow. I assume the second meeting in, I mean, in August should be fine in theory. I will, I will regroup with you tomorrow after I talk to Bob Cook.
So, what I'd prefer to do, Mr. Mayor, is find out, work the timeline backwards to find out what's the latest date. We can send it to CRTPO and then back it up to there to buy us as much time as possible to give you guys good information. So, maybe it's the first meeting in September or something like that.
Okay, well, just remember that meeting in September is already getting extremely full.
Okay.
So, that's why I was concerned about waiting till the second meeting in September.
Yeah, let's, let's see what CT, maybe it's, maybe it'll end up being a second meeting in August.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you, Dana. Next item, twelve G is considered facade grant application for the Thunderbrook Plaxico House, three sixteen East Matthews Street. Jay?
Good evening. If you scroll down, there's a photo of the building. This request is, of course, for the Thunderbrook Plaxico House. As you all know, this is a historic landmark. It was designated back in, I believe, thirteen or fourteen when the Landmark Commission purchased it. It was subsequently rezoned after that. Property was, we believe, constructed circa eighteen eighty. The request before this evening has been EDAC. It was recommended for approval unanimously last Thursday. It does meet all of the program guidelines for approval, so it's a fifty-fifty match, up to twenty-five hundred dollars. You'll see in the memo that the applicant's intending to spend, or their quote, rather, is for almost ten thousand dollars for a complete exterior repaint, including all the associated trim. So, staff does recommend approval of the facade grant request and we'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Mr. Higgins?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment since I'm on EDAC. I've, I've recognized that these grants are sometimes controversial due to we're helping somebody paint their personal property, for instance. However, in my opinion, it's a, we do about two or three of these a year and it's a small incentive to encourage somebody to do something that's historically accurate instead of putting up siding or something that's gonna last forever. So, that's why I'm in favor of it, but it has become more controversial of late because it's maybe sometimes seen as just helping someone do maintenance. But I, I think it is an incentive to remain historically accurate.
Mr. Melton?
Yeah, I used to, Mayor Protim, I've not heard any controversy or any comments on it. Is there a small group of people who are complaining about a program we've gotten?
I've, I've heard a few comments from, from a few constituents, not a lot, but just wanted to, I'm certainly in favor of it.
Mr. Query.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mayor Protim Higgins, that this, this sets a pattern to keep these buildings in, in good repair because we know that if they go too far, then it's, it really is a problem. And I think it's kind of a general, general thing. And when the match is like it is, is somebody really wants it done or they're not gonna match it with this big a difference. So, I agree that it's, it's well worthwhile to go on.
Mr. Mel?
Yeah, I, I wish we could actually promote this more because keeping these buildings and the maintenance of them is so important and there are a couple that I wish would apply for this grant. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the facade grant request at three sixteen East Matthews Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Melton?
I'm, I'm gonna support the motion and vote in favor of it, but I agree with a comment that was made on the other side of the dice. I, I think while I've set up here and on planning, I could probably count on one hand the number of these that we've approved or even been asked to approve. And I know staff does everything they can to get the word out, but I'd like to see if, if we can maybe bump it up a little bit and ratchet up our marketing or exposure of this to, to downtown businesses. I brought it up to two folks and they, they looked at me like I was speaking a foreign language. They had no idea what I was talking about, but not doubting staff's, what they're doing, but maybe we need to turn it up a little bit.
I think when we, we did this a number of years ago, the intent was to ensure that we helped people who were taking on the task of some of these historic buildings and old buildings, which are difficult to maintain, giving some incentives to ensure that they stay maintained at the highest level possible. And I have heard nothing but positive things about the facade grant. I agree, Mr. Melton, there's many people that don't even know about it. But I do take the time to help people understand that when I talk to them. And I think that our Historic Preservation Committee is in support of this. So, I've not heard anything negative about this particular program and I'll be supporting this facade grant as well. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item, twelve H, is to discuss the Mecklenburg County referendum on sales tax increase for arts and parks. And I'll, I'll start with just a little bit of a precursor here. This has been passed by the county commission to put on the ballot in November. The manager and I talked to our respective, the respective individuals at the county, he to the manager, I to our District Six representative. And we have been assured that the money that would be used for what is now arts, parks, greenways and multi-use paths for the small towns will be distributed to the towns. However, I do have some concerns about whether that will actually occur because the referendum will not specifically state that. So, we're continuing, I know you and I haven't circled back on your discussion with Dina, but I wanted to start talking about this. It's, it's going to be approximately four-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Four-hundred-and-eight.
Four-hundred-and-eight thousand. Okay, there we are, yeah. For Matthews annually. And we'll be able to use this for our greenways and for multi-use paths as well as other park and arts-related projects. So, you know, from that side of it, I wanna make sure that we consider this appropriately. But if it's going to be money that is controlled by Mecklenburg County and given to us to use on projects in Matthews, I'm not necessarily in favor of having them do that. So, we're working on this. Do you have anything to add?
The only thing I'd say, it's fifty million, a quarter cent, they're estimating fifty million dollar tax collected. Very close to half of that would be carved off the top and go to the, some new organization, it's Arts and Science Council kind of organization. You'd get away from all those workforce programs that have become less and less successful. I think employees hated them because it was some kind of form of extortion. They want to put eight million dollars towards education. Then, they would put fifteen million dollars into parks and greenways. That's the county's deal. And that leaves about two-point-five million dollars and they would distribute that between the six towns. For Matthews, it'd be four-hundred thousand dollars plus change. And it could be for arts and culture, but you know, we have the, we have the tourism funds. We don't, in my mind, we don't need to put more money towards that. Parks, that's an interesting thing, you know, because four-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars would be something like debt service on a five-million-dollar bond, plus or minus. Then, the other thought is about greenways and just like, as an example, if this did go through and the numbers were right and there's some question about that, that you take one, you know, one year's distribution and you throw it in there and that's our contribution to that eighty-twenty match. So, you know, it's, it's real dollars, I would say, could see, you know, it's, it's getting close to a penny on the tax rate. And I think for us, as focused we are on, on greenways and door parks, we could use this money. And she did say that it's our call on how we would distribute it within our town, it's not the county, giving us the money and then telling us, "Oh, and spend it on this greenway or that park."
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Just a question to clarify, we're at seven-point-seven, oh-seven-two-five right now in Charlotte, correct? Would it be going to eight cents or eight percent tax?
It's a quarter cent tax.
So, it'd be seven and a half cents? I think we're at seven and a quarter.
Okay, yeah, that's what I think it's going to be.
There might be a, you know, a meal tax or a tourism tax if you're at McDonald's or a hotel, but if you just buy anything else, I think it's seven and two-five. So, it'd be a quarter cent tax?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
Just a question, did I understand you correctly that we would get only about half of the money back?
No, so what they're, of that fifty...